I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024, to order at this time. We'll start by asking Assistant County Manager Kerry Sanders to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Sanders?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity. Guide our thoughts and actions to accomplish our work and goals this evening. May your blessings be upon us always. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As any of the elected officials that are with us tonight, and I believe tonight we have Sheriff Chris Thomas. It's always good to have the sheriff here with us. I don't think there's anyone else. If I've missed them, please let me know. And we're good. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. At this time, we need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is adopted. Moving on to item two, will be the approval of items on the consent agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to remove and have one of those items moved to the agenda?
Chairman, I would like to move item J to the regular agenda, please.
So we will be moving item J in the consent agenda, core values modification, to the agenda, which will be item six. So we'll move that there. Any other items there? Or now we need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, or approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item three, Mr. Smitherman, public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up for public comment this evening.
All right. Thank you, sir. So we'll move right into proclamations. And is that Ms. Sanders? That'll do that one.
It is. We have one proclamation this evening for Hispanic Heritage Month 2024. Christina Fernandez and Mildred Latino Thompson, President and Vice President of the Onslow Hispanic Latino Association, along with Laquisha Caldwell from Onslow County Parks and Rec Program, will accept the proclamation. It so reads, "Whereas Onslow County is a diverse community that celebrates the rich cultural heritage of its residents, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15th to October 15th to honor the history, culture, and contributions of the Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States, and whereas the Hispanic and Latino community in Onslow County has played a vital role in the growth and development of our region, contributing significantly to our economic prosperity, cultural vibrance, and social fabric, and whereas the observance of Hispanic Heritage Month provides an opportunity for all residents to learn about and appreciate the rich cultural traditions, language, and history that Hispanic and Latino Americans have brought to our community, and whereas Onslow County acknowledges the importance of fostering an inclusive and welcoming environment where all cultures are celebrated and where diversity is viewed as a source of strength, and whereas through educational events, cultural activities, and community engagements, Onslow County will highlight the significant achievements and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, both past and present. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Onslow County, and encourages all residents to join in recognizing and celebrating the important contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our community and nation, presented this 16th day of September 2024."
It's a great honor to be able to stand before you and present this proclamation because Onslow County is such a diverse community, and celebrating the rich cultural heritage that is a part of Onslow County is something that we always need to acknowledge. Because Onslow County, a few years ago, was listed as one of the top five most integrated and culturally diverse communities in the nation. And that is what Onslow County is, and it's always great to have the opportunity to celebrate the cultural heritage, in particular this time for the Hispanic and Latino community. And Onslow County has a lot of people here to represent and celebrate this rich cultural heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The vision for Onslow County is to be the community of choice for this community, for coastal North Carolina, and we are honored to stand alongside of the Onslow Hispanic Latino Association to accept this proclamation. So thank you, Chairman, and to the entire Board of the Commissioners. Thank you for your encouragement and continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Foster. Members of the Board of County Commissioners, we appreciate the words that you are acknowledging Hispanic Heritage Month. In 1968, President Lyndon Baines Johnson declared Hispanic Heritage Week. And 20 years later, in 1988, President Ronald Reagan decided, nope, we're going to do a whole month. So we went from September 15th to October 15th. And we celebrate the contributions of our people to contribute to the arts, delicious foods, the culture, and just the community experience to the United States. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and partner with agencies in the community, especially Onslow County Parks and Recreation. Especially on Saturday, October 12th, we'll be having a continuing celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month over at Onslow Pines Park, beginning with a soccer tournament in the morning. Later in the day, we will have a community grill where we'll invite people to come and bring their grills, cook their food, and share their food, as well as we'll have crafts, we'll have music, we'll have entertainment, and we would love to invite the public to come and join us at Onslow County Parks, excuse me, at Onslow Pines Park. We appreciate the community involvement with our business partners and community agencies that have also stepped up to help us get the word out about Hispanic Heritage Month, as well as throughout the year, and our multiple events that we have throughout the year. We recently had the Summer Latin Fiesta at, excuse me, at Commons Recreation Center on July 27th. We had over 13,000 people attend our festival, and we had over 20 food trucks. Everybody sold out. We had entertainment inside, we had outside entertainment, we had vendors. Everybody had a great time. The Marine Corps Band opened up again for us, and they did a fantastic job. But we appreciate all that Onslow County helps us to be able to do our job, to get the word out about opportunities for people who are of Spanish-speaking backgrounds. Thank you very much. [applause] Everyone that's with Onslow Hispanic Latino Association that's here, if you could come up, we're going to take a nice picture with the proclamation that we got tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say real quick, congratulations to the Hispanic community. I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing. We are the most diversified community here, I think, in the state of North Carolina, and it's good to see everybody getting along and respecting each other and respecting each other's backgrounds. I myself, you know, I'm not Hispanic, but I do have an Asian background, and I appreciate what you guys do and what you represent to this community. And also, I want to thank Parks and Recs. You guys always stand out. And I'm going to embarrass her, but I have my son-in-law's sister sitting right there, Camry Brawt. Raise your hand, Camry. Raise your hand. And she's my son-in-law's sister, and I forgot that she recently went to work for, or she's been to work for Onslow County Parks and Recs. So congratulations to you guys.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. We'll move right into general items. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask our new Finance Officer, Kevin Patterson, to present this item. Just to set this up, we've been through, predating me by probably more than a year, a lot of changes in how we procure, who our auditor is, why we procure them, who we procured. We've listened to you talk about this service. We had some unanticipated frustrations renewing our agreement with our auditor. So we went out to the market to see what the market could do, and Kevin's going to present what we found out.
We did go out for a proposal, and we had two firms submit a completed proposal. Those were Malden Jenkins and Cherry Beckett. Both firms are in good standing and have excellent reputation. Malden Jenkins was recommended by staff, including my, for consideration for the three-year engagement with this. They do have 10 counties in North Carolina, which are, many of which are actually comparable and with Onslow County, as well as their project manager will, also has previous experience working with Onslow County, and that was the aspect that actually gave them the advantage over Cherry Beckett, because both firms are both highly qualified. For the cost, Malden Jenkins was actually the lower cost, but that was not the driving force in the selection. This is a three-year engagement, but the engagement would be renewed annually, so we are not absolutely locking in the situation for three years. If the Board approves this, we will submit the application, the engagement letter will be signed, and the contract will be submitted to the LGC for final approval. The target audit completion date is January 31st, which is still a aggressive timetable for completing an audit for the county. This will be considered late. October 31st is the statutory requirement for an audit, but there is an automatic extension to December 31st without request. So we will wind up getting a extending, asking for an extension in the month of December. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We certainly don't like our audit to be late. Appreciate, hopefully, this firm can get it together for us.
And with that, after, once this audit is completed, we would actually begin the process to engage the, prepare the engagement letter by April of next year. So we would actually begin testing, preliminary testing in May and June of next year, with the target of completing well before the December 31st practical deadline.
Any further conversation, discussion, or questions? So fantastic. We're glad to hear this and looking forward to getting into the right timeframe following this audit cycle. So we appreciate your work there. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right into item B. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. This is a matter that was brought to your attention by the Topsail Shoreline Protection Commission, which is loosely a group of the interests of the three towns in Pender and Onslow Counties. That group has forwarded several weeks ago a request to the two counties and all associated municipal jurisdictions to pass a resolution to request that the General Assembly consider a moratorium on shellfish leases in these waters. The general complaints are around the folks coming from all over the country to take these leases, the lack of organization around these leases, the lack of navigation caused by these leases, and many other things I'm not qualified really to speak further about. I do know that several of you, and myself, have been seeking opinion of others, how they, how this might play out in our watermen's community, in our fishing community, and elsewhere. But this is presented this evening for your consideration. Will be forwarded to our delegation if adopted.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what this all brings about is it's called bottom. It's actually the land under where the oysters are at, and I've talked to some of the crabbers, and the crabbers won't be allowed to be in those areas, and the fishermen will not be allowed in those areas. It actually affects recreational fishing, and it actually takes into consideration the crabbers that can't go into those facilities. They're taking the bottom bottoms up, and tops on them, we got a bunch of sneeze ferret are trying to take up also.
Is this passed along to marine fisheries as well? Isn't it marine fisheries that gives out the leases? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct. So we certainly will send it to their director, yes. Thank you.
Really comes down to a lot of the leases that are being requested are coming from outside of Pender and Onslow County. So it's having, outside influence is having a major impact on the Onslow County fishermen and communities here. So I think this is something that helps take care of our, our community in Onslow County as necessary. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. So we are moving to item six, which is item J, the core values modification. Mr. Smitherman?
Sure, and I appreciate Commissioner Carpenter allowing us to present this further beyond the consent agenda, because what's important is that we emulate outwardly the values we espouse in this organization as we carry out services for all of our 215,000 constituents. As you're aware, we requested or submitted to you at your last workshop that we felt a slight modification to those values be, not the actual value, but the title of the value be modified to make it more memorable. And I'm going to ask Assistant County Manager Ben Warren to further present the changes proposed.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman of Commissioners. As Mr. Smitherman mentioned earlier this year, the Board adopted a set of core values, and we use those core values to really help shape the culture of the organization and to guide employee performance. Incorporated into our performance evaluations and looking at ways to incorporate that into hiring processes and other things that they really help guide the organization. One of the concerns we had was ensuring that the core values are both memorable and easy for our staff to be able to relate to. And so we examined the core value words and the core values themselves. We felt like the core values were right on target and were perfect for the organization, but we looked at possibly changing some of the core value words with synonyms that would allow us to create an acronym that would allow folks to easily relate back to the core values. And so our request this evening is to do just that. When you look at the existing core value words, sustainability, innovation, accountability, customer service, and integrity, the change would be to use the value words resilience, excellence, accountability, customer service, and honesty to form the acronym REACH. And so our request this evening is for the Board to consider approving the proposed modifications to the core value words, and if approved, update Resolution 24-002 to reflect the changes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you again for expanding on that a little bit for all of us. I do think it's really important that our citizens understand that what happens internally here will greatly impact the service that they do provide, as Mr. Smitherman said. So thank you very much for doing that.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. We appreciate it, as Onslow County's core values causes us to reach, to continue to improve and be better. So if you're not doing your job, if you're not looking to try and improve each and every day, so thank you for this, Ben. We appreciate it. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So now comes the time in the meeting that we get to hear the managers' comments. Mr. Smitherman?
Thank you, sir. Not a lot this evening, just a couple of things for both yours and the public's information. One is how proud we are of our Animal Services Department and some recent statistics published. We have more animals adopted and less animals being euthanized than in recent memory, and just a lot of good things. I encourage you to check out the Animal Services Facebook page, where they've received a lot of praise lately from our citizens, and more importantly, take a look at the stats that, of what we're doing down there and how those trends are moving. It's good stuff, and more good stuff to come. As the Board's aware, but for the public's benefit, there's a group of people in the greater community with representatives from all of our municipalities and areas that make up a strategic planning committee for the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Organization. They have been empowered and funded to create a new economic development strategy for the next five years for Onslow County. Not only were they funded by the County of Onslow, the City of Jacksonville, and Onwassa, but most recently, the Town of Holly Ridge has equally contributed to this endeavor. So we're well-funded, and the committee selected a firm to lead that process, and they'll be getting going very, very soon. But I just wanted to impart upon everyone, there's a lot of positive momentum and energy around the future opportunities, economic opportunities, in Onslow County, and we're trying to package that, or that organization is trying to package that, and get an action plan so that we can realize our full potential over the next five years. And there's a lot of just positive momentum behind that, and this Board of Commissioners is the majority reason that that initiative got started. Also looking forward in, to a joint meeting with you and the Planning Commission in October. Do we have a date? Have we gotten that far? I don't think we have a date quite yet, but we're working with the Planning Commission, Planning Board, to meet jointly with you guys so that the Commissioners and the Planning Commission Board can speak in the same time, in the same room, about our values that are espoused in that new comprehensive plan that you just adopted, and how we are collectively going to administer those plans to make sure those plans are realized on the ground as we make modifications to our development patterns in the county. And then finally, I'll just say that everybody should be real careful because there's a lot of high water out there, and depending on where you live, you probably will cross some this evening. So thank you very much, Chairman. Hope everyone has a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Commissioner comments? Who would like to jump right in?
I tell you, I just want to say thank you, and it's been, it's been a busy time. We've had more workshops since the county manager's been, has been here, and I applaud that endeavor. Got a long ways to go and a very short time to get there, but it's going to take a little bit of time, so be patient. And public service is what it's all about. God bless you. Be careful. Turn around, don't drown. God bless you.
Next.
Let me take it?
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity to meet with several citizens over the last couple of weeks, and some of the other Commissioners were with me in some of those meetings, but they brought up issues with our, our planning and development, with our health, the environmental health services, with our water and sewer services, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank. I think that, I think that our employees are demonstrating those core values that we just talked about, because our Planning and Development Department has worked real hard to address the issues that we've brought to their attention. Environmental Health has worked to address those issues, and our Water and Sewer Authority are working to address the issues that have been brought to them. So I appreciate all of the employees and their consistent adherence to our core values. Thank you for that, guys. Also, wanted to mention one volunteer that's here tonight, and a long-serving member of our Board of Equalization Review, Dennis Bragg, he's hiding back there in the back, and I want to thank him for his service on our Board of Equalization Review. That's not a very fun job, I don't think, to have to sit through those, well, hear those concerns. So I, we appreciate your service, Dennis. Thank you. Y'all be safe out there tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan, you ready?
Thank you, everybody, for being here, and be safe going home.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you for being here tonight. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Same, just looking forward to the 100 Counties Prepared event tomorrow in Raleigh that I'll be attending. It's for emergency preparedness for elected officials put on by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, because I think there's nothing better than knowing what to do before we get into it. So I'll come back with some good information.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Vice Chairman?
Real quick, just want to remind everybody, you know, for those that have relatives and friends, cherish the moment. It's been a tough month for me. Within the span of 30 days, I lost five friends that I knew, three of them that I, that I worked with extensively, that passed away, some of them younger than me. And it kind of puts you, makes you kind of question your own mortality, and to realize that you're getting older. So I just, my words to you are, take the moment. If you have loved ones, parents, friends, you know, tell them you love them, you know, hang on to them, you know, cherish a moment with them, and hopefully, you know, they'll have a long and prosperous life. But when you get hit like that, especially in law enforcement, with several people that you really work closely with, it hits home, and you know them very well. So, and other than that, the only other thing I'm going to say, because everybody has been ragging me about it, I want to thank Sheriff Thomas for sending me a stupid meme, but it was funny. My Owen Three Seminoles haven't won a game yet, so he sent me a meme that said, this is Owen, whatever his name is, this is Owen some other person. Then he said, this is Owen Two, and he had the Florida State Seminoles logo behind him. So well played, Chris. And that was Saturday night when you sent that to me, so I appreciate that. But don't worry, we're coming back. And Georgia almost fell off the bandwagon Saturday, 13 to 12. Other than that, be safe. We've got the cyclone out here. It's going to rain all night. There's flash flooding warnings. Please be safe. And like Commissioner Scott said, turn around, don't drown.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I just glad that we started with, we have a long way to go and a short time to get there. I'm not sure if Commissioner Scott knew he was quoting song lyrics from Smokey and the Bandit or not, but he put that out there, and we knew that Vice Chairman was going to want some sympathy tonight. But we're going to do our best to get the Seminoles to play the Panthers in Charlotte so one of the teams can win. But the hope for the Seminoles is they do have to play the Tar Heels, so.
That's a win.
They got a chance. But if they do not beat the Tar Heels, he'll miss the meeting shortly thereafter that. It was a great night. Core values is something that's so important, to put that out, and Commissioner Carpenter getting that out onto the, the main agenda for everyone to hear that. I think it's important for all of Onslow County to hear and share what those core values are, and I think that presentation and proclamation right in the, in the beginning is a tribute to what our core values are. Onslow County is not one of the fastest-growing areas in North Carolina because we do things wrong. It's growing at the rate it's growing at because we do things right. And it's always great to celebrate the diversity, and in this case, the Hispanic cultural heritage, doing that, and it's always great for Onslow County to do that, to make Onslow County the coastal, the coastal community of choice. And that's because of the leadership that we have in Onslow County, from the Sheriff's Office to the office to the airport, to our planning, right into our HR, right into our finance, and we've got some really good people that have come on board, and we're looking forward to, to that, just that, looking forward to looking forward as we move forward, preparing for the future. That was a lot of words. But, Mr. Smitherman, we appreciate the leadership that you have, you have exhibited by bringing people on board, creating and working on a strategic plan, the development of the core, the core values and sharing that, and I think those are all something that is necessary for this organization to continue moving forward in the positive light, because right now, by the time we hit 2040, 2050, we'll be over 250,000 people here, and we need to be prepared for that, just like Commissioner Carpenter said, and all the work that is going on right now is what is preparing us for that future. So that work is not unnoticed, that work is not insignificant, and the success of any organization starts with its leadership, and we appreciate what each of our departments and everyone is doing in Onslow County to ensure that. With that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We are adjourned.